Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our January fourteenth Richland School District Two School Board meeting. I sort of want to thank everyone for being here. We apologize for being a few moments late, but thank you for your presence. Happy New Year to all of you as we return back to school and certainly hope that your holidays were warm and successful and safe and we certainly welcome you back into the second part of our school year. As the recently elected Chairman of the Richland Two School District Board, I'd like to say publicly that I want to thank Dr. Bill Fleming, our former Chair of this past year, for the outstanding job that he did in working as our Chairman on the past year. Certainly commend him both publicly and privately for doing a superb job, working through some very difficult issues and difficult times and being able to continue to move us forward, as he did. And so I commend you, Dr. Fleming, and I ask the audience if you'll join me in congratulating and giving him a round of applause for his service. I had forgotten how much fun this was until I sat back in the seat. You can kind of do things on the side you can't do when you're sitting up here. Also, I want to thank Mrs. Brill for her service as our Vice Chair. She served in that position for the past two years and I want to thank her for her commitment and work, working alongside the former Chairman and her pledge of support to work with the new administration of offices for the Board. Thank her as well. And certainly I want to thank Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Melinda Anderson, for her service as the Secretary during the past term as well and for her years of service to the school district. And last but not least, I want to thank each of my fellow Board members for their outstanding work and commitment and their very passionate views and commitment to the quality of education in Richland Two for all 27,000 students and more than 3,000 employees. Thank you for your commitment last year and I certainly know that as I demonstrated or attempted to demonstrate my commitment to the former officers, I'm certain that their level of commitment to the current officers will be equal or greater than that. So thank you all very, very much for your outstanding service. At this time, we will stand and have an inspirational moment in our pledge of allegiance. As we are standing, I certainly want to ask us to remember the school shooting that occurred in New Mexico today and we're so grateful that no one actually lost their lives, but nevertheless, yet again, another example of the pain and hurt that exists in our country. And as well, we want to remember Captain Pelusi, who was a former member of the Richland County Sheriff's Department, individual whom I knew and I'm sure many of you in this room knew, who finally lost his battle with cancer this year, today, excuse me. Certainly want to remember his family in our thoughts and our prayers. The inspirational thought that I will share with you tonight comes from a book by John C. Maxwell and the title of the book is "The Right to Lead." It says, "Most of the significant things done in the world were done by persons who were either too busy or too sick. There are few ideal and leisurely settings for the disciplines of growth. Courage takes us where what courage teaches us what should be feared and what ought not to be feared. Only by taking action do we gain that knowledge. And from that knowledge comes an inner strength that inspires us to preserve in the face of great adversity, persevere in the face of great adversity, and inspires others to follow in the most difficult of times. Courage is what makes someone a leader." At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. We'll do our pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Anderson, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. No discussion, we will vote. At this time, the next agenda item is our consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I made an error.
Yes, ma'am.
On the approval of the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Didn't check, but I wanted to make sure on the charter school.
Mm-hmm.
Is that on the agenda? I can't recall, looking it up.
Not, it was brief, I believe it's not for tonight.
It was a brief in here, but we were not discussing that tonight, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, I'm fine, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Mr. Chair, please we approve our consent agenda.
Motion by Dr. Fleming is her second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brill. Any further discussion? Motion, Passage, and Analysis, thank you very much. At this time, next item on our agenda is special recognition. Dr. Ham?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's my privilege to, first of all, present two special recognitions to our former Board Chairman, Dr. Fleming. Dr. Fleming, if you would stand, please. The first presentation is on behalf of the South Carolina School Boards Association and this year, 12 school board members from around the state will receive lapel pins and certificates for 20 consecutive years of school board service. 20 years is certainly evidence of remarkable dedication to education in the state of South Carolina and we are certainly fortunate that Dr. Fleming has been dedicated to education and the children here in Richland School District Two. He's among these 12. Veteran school board members provide vision and valuable leadership for districts and Dr. Fleming has worked tirelessly on behalf of our students and our community. We have been fortunate to have Dr. Fleming as a Board Member and Board Chair. Dr. Fleming, it's my honor to present you with this certificate and this recognition pin. And equally as importantly, on the part of Richland School District Two, it's my privilege to give you this plaque and with tremendous gratitude to say how grateful we are to you for your services and our performance.
Thank you, Dr. Ham. Additional special recognitions?
I'm going to turn that over to Dr. McDaniel.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Ham and staff, tonight we are recognizing members of our Richland Two family who have achieved great things. As I call folk forward, I would like to tell you a little bit about each of our honorees and as I call your name, please come forward. First, I'd like to call Dr. Karen Cooper-Haber, Coordinator of the Family Intervention Services, to come forward. She has received the prestigious Crystal Star Award, a competitive honor for those who have made significant contributions to the area of school dropout prevention and recovery. Dr. Cooper-Haber received the award at the National Dropout Prevention Center Network Conference in Atlanta. This award signifies that there is cutting-edge leadership of innovative programs in Richland Two. Dr. Cooper-Haber continues to bring positive national attention to Richland Two. Next, Blythewood High School's Susan Newton has been named the National Sodexo Experience Winner for her courage and heroic actions. She will be accompanied by her Principal, Mr. Keith Price, and several of her cafeteria and Sodexo coworkers. It was on September 30th that Ms. Newton noticed a suspicious man on campus and contacted the school resource officer. The man was evading police and had come on campus to make his escape. Due to Ms. Newton's bravery, the man was apprehended and removed from campus without incident or harm to students. We thank Ms. Newton for her continued dedication and fast-thinking action. Believe Ms. Newton has a couple of comments. Spring Valley Coach Miles Aldrich, please come forward along with your Principal, Dr. Baron Davis. Coach Aldrich has received two of the most prestigious coaching awards available in the world of South Carolina high school athletics. He was selected by the South Carolina Football Coaches Association as a Palmetto Champions All-Star Coach of the Year and the same organization has named him the 2013 South Carolina High School Football Coach of the Year. Coach Aldrich took over a program that had three wins in three years and in a brief time led the team to its first undefeated regular season in school history. Coach, if you don't mind staying up here for just a minute while we call up one of your outstanding players and captain of your team, Christian Miller. We could be here all night listening to the achievements of this high school standout, but I'll name only a few. He was selected to play on the prestigious South Carolina Shrine Bowl Team, a finalist for the Dit Butkus Award as one of the nation's top high school linebackers. He has broken all school records for tackles, tackles-for-loss, and sacks, ranked the number one outside linebacker in the country by ESPN and others. What's most impressive is that Christian has a 3.95 GPA and has made the A and A B honor roll every semester in high school. Christian, it takes a lot to get a standing ovation from principals, congratulations. Richland Northeast Girls Soccer Team, as you make your way up here with your Coach, John Mills, and Principal Sabrina Suver, we want to congratulate you for your being named a recipient of the National Soccer Coaches Association of America High School Team Academic Award. This award is presented to teams that have an average GPA of 3.25 or higher from the previous school year. The Lady Cavs had a GPA of 3.85. The team is one of... The team is one of 12 girls' teams in the state of South Carolina to receive this award and Coach Mills, if you wouldn't mind introducing your team to the audience.
My team is here tonight, Elizabeth Herring, one of my needle twins, but I can't tell which one's winning. I've been here for two years and still don't know which one's winning. Laura Checo, Cambry Omen, Leslie Skidmore, Rachel Skidmore, Beth Betty, Betty Neal, Elizabeth Checo, and Alyssa White.
We honor Kelly Mill Middle School twice tonight. First, I'd like to call up members of the Ink Magnet Program who finished first place in the South Carolina Finance Challenge. Lead teacher Pam Bruni, teacher David Walker, and Principal Jeff Timoney will accompany Alexis Memms, Wade Fletcher, and Sean Wallace. Unfortunately, Joey Gonzalez was not able to make it tonight. The students were tested on their business and economics knowledge. More than 100 teams entered the competition and not only did Kelly Mill win first place, other Kelly Mill Ink teams finished second and third. Mr. Timoney, please stay up here as we call up the Kelly Mill Avid Coordinator, Beth Because of its outstanding success, Kelly Mill has been revalidated as an Avid National Demonstration Site. Schools considering Avid or struggling to do Avid correctly can come and visit Kelly Mill, which was the first Avid Demonstration Site in the state. Avid is an in-school academic support program for seventh and eighth graders that prepares students for college eligibility and success. We're very proud to have them as a selection site in South Carolina. We could have one more round of applause for our war winners who are honored tonight. And now I'd like to ask Michelle Taylor Brown to introduce us to our new and renewed National Board Certified Teachers.
Good evening. Richland School District Two is pleased to announce 27 teachers earned National Board Certification. We're also pleased to announce 28 teachers earned National Board Certification for a second time. Overall, a total of 678 district teachers have earned this prestigious achievement, making us number one in the state and 12th nationally. Congratulations to our National Board Certified Teachers. We'll start with our renewals. Beth O'Handberry, Laura Jeffers, Bookman Road Elementary, Rebecca English, Bridge Creek Elementary, Tamara Pingle, Center for Inquiry, Michelle Kempson, Lake Carolina, Robert Lane, North Springs Elementary, Audrey Andreski, Polo Road Elementary, Amy Ritter, Pontiac Elementary, Carol Jackson, Rice Creek Elementary, Susan Robey, Blythewood Middle, Casey Ellisor, Sherry Whitlock, E.L. Wright Middle, Manatia Freeman, Connie Jordan, Natasha Morgan, Kathy O'Quinn, Robin Paycheck, Cal Reeves, Kelly Mill Middle, Sheila Edwards, Muller Road Middle, Allison Colbe, Summit Parkway, Jennifer Lanier, Blythewood High, Jennifer Cribs, Richland Northeast High, Vanessa Roden, Charles Vaughn, Ridgeview High, Stephanie Pouskars, Tina Turnipseed, Spring Valley High School, Robin Baker, Karen Hatter, and Westwood High School, Mary Brebner. If we could give them a round of applause. And to our new 2013 National Board Certified Teachers from Contaba Trail, Mallory Williams, Center for Knowledge, Anna Coleman, Killian Elementary, Shalanya Knotts-Holliday, and Camice Ortiz, Lake Carolina Elementary, Mary Ellen Baquet, Langford Elementary, Linda Brabham, and Rebecca Hill, Nelson Elementary, Narkeisha Schofield, North Springs Elementary, Hope Lloyd, Polo Road, Sonia Harrison Young, Pontiac Elementary, Elizabeth Hawkins, Sandlapper Elementary, Tamara Porter, Blythewood Middle, Tyler Abernathy, Melissa Disinger, Stephen Gunter, Alana Tate, Ashley Buchanan from Longleaf Middle, Blythewood High, Lisa McAlpine, from Blackwood High, Lisa McAlpine, Richland Northeast, Lindsay Ott, Ridgeview High, Keely Hitchens, Shawn Hoppy, Suzanne Liggett from Spring Valley, Regina Dilly, Sandra Wells from Westwood, Amanda Ashley, Pam Davis, and Ryan Holden.
Hang in there, Pam.
Sorry, we have a little mix-up here. Now, ask before you got up whether or not you did a little take. Oop, won't see Chip.
I feel so...
They didn't switch chairs.
I was thinking my chair was not my chair.
I asked Chip if I could move.
Next time, we'll have to slow down.
As folks are exiting, as folks are exiting in the building, again, we want to thank all of our National Board Teachers. Let's give those National Board Teachers another round of applause as they exit. Thank you very much. At this time, as a few more exit, and as folks are taking pictures.
That was a lot of people. No wonder had to open up so many.
Again, thank you very much for your attendance tonight, National Board Certified And as you leave, we're going to resume our Board meeting. Those that can hear me. At this time, we're going to have our faculty focus. Ms. Mallett?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am delighted to have this opportunity to introduce some very special folks. Three years ago, we started a Leadership Academy and we held it for two years and then this wonderful group of folks representing others who have participated really got together and said, "You know, we really would like to organize and plan it and create it ourselves." And they have and I could not be any more proud of these fine folks. We have Will Anderson, we have Jessica Agee, Terry Stone, and Pasquale Bates, some of which were in the first cohort, some were in the second cohort, and now they have started the third cohort themselves, completely on their own. So I present to you these wonderful folks. And by the way, Tyler Abernathy, who's just National Board Certified, was also one of our first presenters for the program. Will, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Sue, and thank you, Honorable War Members, Dr. Ham, and the rest of the executive staff. Thank you all for letting us be here. My first slide tonight, exactly what Sue said, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jessica Agee and she's going to talk a little bit about how we are as a group and how we got formed and then go from there. So thank you.
Will took the easy road and didn't tell you we invited all of those people to see our presentation. Sort of what we did, and I'll sort of highlight what Sue's already mentioned, we were members of the first cohort and second cohort of the Leadership Academy and together we've sort of tried to take the parts that we thought were really great about that and revamp it to create a different version and we've titled it Leading Up. We divided into three subcommittees, which were logistics, sort of where are we going to meet, food, that type of stuff, tech selection, and then content. We originally started by surveying former participants to figure out what really resonated with them from their experience, what we should carry forward and what we should maybe leave behind. And at that point, we broke into our three groups, we went through the applications of people who applied, and we selected 24 participants, actually 25, I'm sorry, who are teachers, support staff, special needs staff, psychologists, transportation and DO staff. So we feel like we have a really strong representation of people who play a different role in our district. From there, we started planning our six days and we helped design the experience that was really tailored to fit the vision for Richland Two centered around the four squares. And we have each of our sessions at the Doco Manor. Our next one coming up is Thursday, which myself and Pasquale will be leading, so we'd like to invite all of you to come and participate. And one of our major goals to overcome was we went from, I think, 18 days last year down to six. So we've really tried to streamline what was really valuable into six days to eliminate teachers particularly being out of the classroom so much. I'll turn it over to Terry. Pasquale, I'm sorry.
Good evening. As Jessica said, we wanted to design the Leadership Academy around the four squares that our district has adopted this year, learning, character, community, and joy. And from the survey that we did with former participants, we built that content around those squares and we also added in some book studies. We read three books from our first cohort that we felt were very valuable and those books were the Element, Strengths-Based Leadership, and The Drive. So we have implemented those three books into it. We do book studies and we do activities surrounded around those three books. In addition, we kept the Action Research Project. Many of the projects that each cohort has done have been implemented in different areas around the district, so we felt that was a very valuable piece to take, to keep into the Leadership Academy. And the last piece that we felt was very valuable was the field study that we did to local businesses because we wanted to build that bridge between the district and our businesses and the community. So this year, we're going to Pepsi Company next month, actually, because we want to continue to build that bridge between corporate and education.
As part of the Steering Committee, we are facilitating everything that we're doing with the Leading Up Academy. Two of us will lead and two people will attend who are going to lead the next session, so we're kind of piggybacking the facilitating of it, not literally, but piggybacking it. We also continue to meet as a Steering Committee on a monthly basis and we get feedback after each session from all of the participants and we take their feedback and use that to guide the next session, to make it really relevant and meaningful to them. Some of our sessions, we have some pictures for you. Our first session was the Thursday before, it was like the night before we got together and it was kind of a meet and greet. Most of our executive staff was able to attend and we really appreciated their presence there. It was more of a like a get-to-know-you type of thing. And then the first session, Tyler and I were actually the ones to facilitate, which, you know, we went through the Leadership Academies previously and so to have to step into that leadership role right away was really, it was a great experience for us. So the first session, we actually had our own Summalet as the guest speaker and then we just spent more time networking and learning about action research and various things that we're going to be doing all year with the participants. So you can just see some pictures of the participants and all of our feedback has been extremely positive. We really have been pleased with that, so we feel like the participants are excited about this opportunity.
Our vision for the Leading Up has been, is basically just one simple sentence, to inspire participants to leave from where they are. We think that's very important for this group and because we have such a variety of people. It's very powerful hearing their feedback and seeing what past participants have done and the things they're doing in their school. We want to continue to doing that and continue that vision for the group. You know, as the future holds for Leading Up, we really appreciate and thank the Board's commitment for this experience for us that are on the Steering Committee and for the participants. They really value that and we think it's a powerful way to build leadership in Richland Two. We've already started about what we're going to do next year, what we're going to do in the future, how we're going to plan a little more in advance, so we're really excited about the continuation of this. I don't want to forget that we've also got a lot of other people, it's not just been us five. There's been a group of about 12 of us who have played a valuable role in the Steering Committee, so if any of one of them are here, just stand and thank you all for your help as well. Tia? Yeah, thank you. There's a, so it's... It's been definitely a group effort and we've been learning along the way as well. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Will. Any questions from the Board or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Fleming.
Just a general question. You mentioned your action research project. Now, does, is that each group, each cohort does one or are they individual or there's, is it a group project?
It, there's individual groups. So there's, last year, for example, there was probably 25 action research projects.
Twenty-five.
So there may be, I think it was about eight to 10 this year. They get in groups or individual. In the past, there was, you could do groups or individual. We're trying to kind of encourage them this year to get in groups and do more group efforts for projects and they do whatever they... And they do whatever they want. And it's really powerful seeing, for example, in a faculty meeting, seeing teachers who possibly used to just kind of sit and just listen. Now they're steering, doing things in their school, doing projects they've always had in their mind, and this is the avenue for them to get those done. So it's really neat seeing people step out of their comfort zone and do these different projects.
Overall goal, if you want to say, anybody can answer this. Overall goal for participants in this Leadership Group, what would you say it would be?
I think Will sort of hit on this in our vision, but our overall goal is that people see leaders within themselves, regardless of which role they play. I think a lot of times, particularly coming out of the classroom, I thought back and thought my administrators were the only leaders on campus. And in reality, that's not true. There are lots of leaders in our classrooms. Clearly, we saw tonight in our cafeteria. So there are a lot of people in our district making a difference. And I think that is our primary goal, is that people start to see themselves as leaders and sort of refine those potential skills, regardless of where they are in the district.
Other questions or comments in the Board? Again, thank you very much for that. Any additional, Ms. Sumilet?
No, again, I would like to thank the Board for your support and vision and allowing us to continue but to make it really Richland Two. We really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is public participation session. We have one person who signed up, and that's Ms. Amy Caldwell. If you would come up to the podium, Ms. Caldwell. And as you're coming, if you would simply state your name for information and your address, and be aware that you have three minutes to share your thoughts. We won't respond to you at this time, but certainly if it requires a response, you will get one from the Board.
Thank you. My name is Amy Caldwell. My address is 10 Ben brush Court, Columbia, South Carolina. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, for allowing me to address you tonight. I come to you tonight to request your reevaluation of a statement regarding transportation for Choice and Magnet School students. The statement currently states that Choice and Magnet School students must provide their own transportation. I'm not asking for this statement to be disregarded completely. Instead, I'm asking for it to be clarified and possibly narrowed in scope. It is abundantly clear to me, and to many others, I believe, why students that choose Magnet or Choice should not be eligible for transportation to their assigned attendance zone. This would require additional bus routes, buses, and drivers. What I am asking is that this Board consider allowing Choice and Magnet students the option of using the bus transportation as long as there are no changes required to their current bus routes. Every Choice and Magnet School student's families pay taxes just like those of students who are already using the bus transportation in Richland Two. I fully understand the need to draw the line in the sand. But I believe the line needs to be reviewed and justified regularly. I also believe there is significance in a Board such as yourselves being willing to step outside of the footsteps of those who went before you. I understand from Dr. Fleming that this policy has been in place since 1993. But I respectfully disagree with his stance that the fact that this policy has been in place for so long provides validation for the policy, when in fact, it could mean the opposite. How many times in history have policies, guidelines, or even laws been revoked because someone or some group had the courage to go beyond the status quo and ask why? That is what I'm asking you to do here tonight. I've spoken to the State Department, and they've indicated that there's no additional cost associated with a student taking a bus from the school they are attending to an already established drop-off location in that school's attendance zone. The only time an additional cost would occur is if a new drop-off location is required. Prior to coming here tonight, I have made many inquiries, as many of you know. And I have yet to really receive an explanation that would help me understand what the impact of changing this policy would be. What would be the cost of allowing a Magnet or Choice participant get down on the bus at the school they are attending and get off the bus at a location where other students attending that school are also unloading? I just ask that you consider this, and I look forward to hearing from you, and thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, could I just say one thing? I did read that email last night. I had a phone call. I was coming back to respond, but I will respond to your email.
Thank you.
I apologize.
And thanks for all of you who already have responded. Thank you.
And Dr. Ham will officially respond on behalf of the district in terms of looking at the request you made tonight in light of the policy as it's currently written. Thank you very much. No one else signed up for public participation. However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come up and address the Board, you have an opportunity to do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is voting on our executive session items. Chair will entertain a motion on the...
Okay, Mr. Chair. Students one and two, we will pull that out for a vote. Do you want to do that right now?
No, we can do the others and come back to that.
Okay. Student four, Blackwood Academy. Excuse me, three. You're right. Three, Blackwood Academy. Student four, adult ed.
Wait a minute, I'm not sure. You lost me. You were pulling something, and then you went on.
You're pulling the first, number one and number two out to vote on them separately.
You're pulling what now?
Number one and number two out. The first two under the appeals.
And then I heard another number.
Then she made a motion on number three to refer to Blackwood Academy.
Okay.
Now she's on number four.
Number four, adult ed. Number five, adult ed. Number six, adult ed. Number seven, Blackwood Academy, refer to the IEP team. Number eight, Blackwood Academy, refer to the IEP team. Number nine, Blackwood Academy. Number 10, Blackwood Academy. Number 11, Blackwood Academy. Number 12, Blackwood Academy. Number 13, deny. Number 14, deny. Number 15, deny. Number 16, deny. Number 17, Blackwood Academy. Number 18, Anna Boyd. Number 19, Anna Boyd.
What did you say, number 17?
Deny. Pardon?
What did you say for 17?
Blackwood Academy.
17, Blackwood Academy.
18?
Anna Boyd. Continue, Ms. Brill.
And then pulling out number one and two.
Heard the motion from Ms. Brill there, second? Second by Ms. Specter. Any further discussion? Hearing now, we're ready to vote. Do you need Jill? Ms. Anderson? Can she vote for you, Ms. Anderson?
Not showing up, pardon me.
Can Jill vote for you?
Oh, it just showed up. Yes, it just showed up.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion on student number one and number two.
Mr. Chair, I'm moved that we deny the request for an appeal for both one and number two.
There's a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Specter. Is there any further discussion? The motion is to deny. Motion passes 4-3. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is contractual matters. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we authorize administration to transfer property on the corner of Faraway Drive and East Boundary Drive, totaling approximately .75 acres from Richland School District Two to Richland County for the purposes of creating a community garden.
Been moved by Mr. Manning, second by Ms. Specter. Any further discussion? Hearing now, we're ready to vote. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is action requested, Board-approved courses. Dr. Ham.
Yeah, there is a new accreditation requirement, or at least a newly interpreted accreditation requirement, that all courses beyond typical courses be approved in the minutes of the Board of Trustees. And because of the number of Magnet programs that we have, we have a large number of non-typical programs. So to be in compliance with this, these courses that we've had in place, some of them for years, we're asking for you to approve officially tonight. Sumilet is here and can answer any questions that you have about those requirements or the courses.
Ms. Sumilet, any comments you'd like to make first before we ask?
No, as I said in the email that I submitted to you all in tonight's agenda item, it is a new mandate, and we have always provided rigorous courses. And as Dr. Ham said, a lot of these are results of our wonderful Magnet programs that we provide for our students.
Any questions or comments on the Board?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. I'm not quite sure how the State Department of Education expects Board members to be knowledgeable in voting on courses when all of us are not educators. So I need some kind of clarification. I'm voting on something, I'm asked to vote on something, that I really don't have the expertise or the knowledge to vote on these courses.
Dr. Ham, would you be...
Nobody's discussed these courses with us. I don't know what, I know some of the courses, but not all of them.
I think because of the sheer number, it'd be very difficult to go through all these. I think you're just going to have to be confident that the academics department in putting these courses together has gone through a rigorous process of reviewing the courses and making sure that they're in good shape and good offerings for our students. Going forward, we certainly would never give you a number like this at one time and can present course by course and explain it to you. So I know it's a difficult situation for you to be in tonight. Moving forward, you would never be in this situation again.
I don't feel comfortable voting on something that I'm not fully having a good understanding as to what I'm voting for. And I respect what you're saying. But you're asking me to, when I place a vote, I'm saying to the constituents and to myself that I know what I'm voting for. And in this case, I have no clue as to what I'm voting for on a lot of these courses.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Therefore, I can't vote tonight because I think that at least we should have had more ample time so that those that I went through, I could at least called and gotten received information on.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
So I can't support it because I have questions.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other questions or comments on the Board?
Yes.
Dr. Fleming? Ms. Johnson?
I have a few questions for clarification as well. I know that some of the high schools teach Lead, Learn, and Serve. And I went through the course list, did not see that mentioned on the agenda as well as the course number. So can you clarify that for me? Also, just some clarification on what is Student Learning 1, 2, 3, and 4, Leadership 1, 2, 3, and 4, Peer Facilitator and Lead Facilitator, Community Service Leader, and Human Service Electives. And I can go back slowly for you if you can clarify those courses for me.
As Dr. Ham said, Ms. Monica Jenkins, I would be happy to go over that with you. But because of the length of the numbers that we have here, I'd rather have an opportunity to go over it with you individually, if that's okay with you. Some of these are not easily detected by their course numbers. But I assure you, they have gone through a rigorous review. They have to submit a scope and sequence. They have to go through a review committee at the district level before they're allowed. And this is particularly true with our credit-bearing courses. Now, some of the elementary schools have created some courses that are specific to their needs. You'll notice some are ESOL. You'll notice some are...
Right, I'm just focused on high school at this moment.
All right, well, some of them are Leadership, part of their Magnet programs. And we would have to go through their course guide to get the actual list of every single course name.
Okay, again, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Johnson.
I agree with Ms. Anderson. I was not able to get clarification on four courses that we have been facilitating in our district. So I'm not comfortable voting on any courses tonight as well because we can't get an answer to those questions yet. Our students are involved in those classes.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I would encourage our Board members in the future, once you get your Board packet, if you have these types of questions, if you would initiate an effort to contact the district and attempt to get those questions answered. And if you're unsuccessful in doing that, I certainly then can respect your right at the Board meeting to question that and withstand your vote. And so if you would do that going forward, I think that would be extremely helpful and probably would be able to get your questions answered prior to Board meeting. Any other comments or questions?
One more comment. Normally, I do do that, but because of my schedule, I was not able to do that.
Understand, Ms. Anderson. Thank you very much.
One comment, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. But again, as Ms. Anderson indicated, I think we're not the only tour that's not clarified on these courses. So I think as a Board, that maybe Ms. Sumilet should have just met with us and shared what these courses are. I don't think individually, because as a Board, we serve as a team. So we all need to be aware of what's being taught.
I know it's true, your view on that, Ms. Johnson, but thank you for your comments. Any other, Mr. Manning?
I want to make a motion that we approve the courses as requested by the district.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Ms. Brill. Now, any further discussion? Dr. Fleming?
Yes, I just want to make sure I'm correct. Are these courses currently being taught? Have been, I mean, of course, we've never had formal approval, but they've gone through review. And these aren't new courses. None of these are new courses.
No, these are not brand-new courses at all, Dr. Fleming. These are courses...
They're just the ones where it's currently teaching now.
Exactly. And some of them, we've had for years, been approving. And this is, again, the first time that the state has required that we offer it in this format. So I apologize, there are a lot of numbers and a lot of lists, a long list. But in the future, we will make sure that you know exactly what courses they're offering that are new.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I just have one more comment.
Yes.
For the record, I just want to say, if these are courses that we've already taught before, then maybe we can get someone to explain at least the Lead, Learn, and Serve course for me. Or Sumilet, if that's a course that we've taught over time. It shouldn't be a problem with someone being able to stand up and explain that course for me.
Well, there's a motion on the floor that's been second. Unless there's any further discussion, we will entertain a vote on that motion.
But I thought that was a...
Ms. Anderson.
She had a question. So you...
Right.
You need to address the question before you move forward with the motion.
There's no further discussion on the motion. She's asking for a specific answer to a specific course within the listing of courses. The motion to approve the listing is what's on the floor. It's a motion that's been second. Ms. Sumilet has indicated that she will be happy to explain to her at another time when she gets the information. Once again, this motion has been made and second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, we're ready to vote. Thank you. The motion passes five to two. Next on our agenda, new business, new action requested, CCSS implementation report update. Dr. Ham?
Ms. Sumalet will be making that report.
Thank you, Dr. Ham, and Mr. Chairman and board members. I'm really excited tonight to be able to share with you the hard work that our folks in Richland Two have been working on as far as Common Core. That has been our number-one priority. And in many cases, it's like we should maybe have this emblazoned on our backs, ask me about the Common Core. It's been that much of a participation. And what I'm trying to do tonight is to share with you just some of the highlights. You have the, in your board packet, all of the information that we submitted, all of the evidence, the timelines, et cetera. But what we wanted to do is kind of pull out some of those data, those numbers, and share with you so you have an idea. And as you see on the screen over here, we have our learning, which is the top quarter of our four-square that Dr. Ham has used in the very beginning, and so learning is that corner. And as far as the professional learning and continuous quality improvement, leadership and support, everything that we have been doing falls under those three categories. And so I'd just like to share with you some of the numbers and what they mean. Twelve hundred plus, that represents over twelve hundred hours that our folks have been working on Common Core, whether it's the implementation teams, whether it's their workshops that they've participated in, whether it's the school-level implementation teams, district-led over twelve hundred. I'm sure I didn't count every single hour, but want you to know that there is a great deal of time and effort that's been put into this. Fifteen hundred, over fifteen hundred of our teachers have been impacted by what we're doing. Are we there yet? We're getting there. We have impacted fifteen hundred of our teachers. Seventy-four percent of our schools, in one of our surveys, indicated that they are much more comfortable with the implementation of the Common Core than they were earlier. So we're making progress there. And then the "all" means all. Every single one of our schools and centers, adult ed, charter high school, everyone has participated and will continue to participate. It is our number-one priority. Under continuous quality improvement, twenty-two are the number of schools that have had, have had school-level snapshots by the entire academic staff going into every classroom. Twenty-two of our schools have had that opportunity, and will continue to go to the others as well. You could look at it like this, fifty-eight percent of our schools have had whole-school walkthroughs through our snapshot. Five is the number of data handouts or attachments that you have in your packet. And we're very proud, as we looked at our data and really pored over it, what does this mean for our district? What have we truly done? And we're proud of what our accomplishments are at this point. And the six represents the number of assessment workshops, two-day assessment workshops for every level, elementary, middle, and high. And we're very proud of that as we continue. Leadership and support, as the saying goes, it takes a village to raise a child. It takes a lot of folks in our district. And we have had our, every one of our principals, lead teachers, we've had IT, all of our IT folks, instructional technologists, as well as academics, and the Office of Assessment and Accountability. A hundred and eight folks have been directly involved in what we've been doing. So we're very, very proud of that. Other supports that we have put in place is the, excuse me, support that we've put in place have been the website that we created for our parents. We're very proud of that. Publishers criteria, we didn't have that before to really take a look at and really delve into what is an appropriate resource, whether it's a textbook, a novel, or whether it's software. We now have that criteria and are moving forward with that. We want to make sure that we're putting forth the very best effort in providing the resources that our teachers need. Next slide. As you can see, this is where we are focused, laser-focused, again, for the remainder of this semester, summer of 2014, as well as 2014, 15. And again, you can see where our focus is going to be. Professional learning, data-driven instruction, observation, and feedback. Professional learning is critical. We know that. The data that we have collected has indicated to us that we need to continue providing this professional development that we have. But the request has been, make it more tailored to our grade level, make it more appropriate to what we're teaching, help us out when we're in a content area that's not an ELA or a math. Help us with that. So we're listening, we know that that's an area that we really want to continue to provide it. They want it, as I said, tailored and differentiated, and so we're listening to that. And teachers will tell us they know what the what is that they're teaching, and that's the standards, but they're not quite sure sometimes how to teach it. What does it look like? What should it look like in my classroom? So we have heard those teachers and administrators, and we'll be providing professional learning this summer to help them. And the other thing, too, is providing feedback to students that's specific and meaningful and directly relates to the learning that they are currently undergoing, or the concept that they're learning. We also know from teachers, from their surveys, from their focus groups, that they need time during the day to plan. And we have had some very innovative principals in schools do some creative planning and flexible scheduling. And so we're going to work with those other schools to help them, if they so desire, help them sort of create some time within the school day without taking away from the learning of the students, to give them an opportunity to collaborate and to work and to coach. That, research has said, is very, very important, to provide that on the time, on the real-time professional learning. All right, the next one that I want to show is, and also some of developments, excuse me, go back to the same one, okay. We've offered some good, really good graduate credit courses, and I hope that you've had a chance to read some of the comments that our teachers have made in reference to some of those courses that we've offered. We're going to continue to offer more courses, content and pedagogy-specific content knowledge to deepen their knowledge and understanding of the content and how to teach it. So that's on our radar as well in our plans for this summer. Leadership and feedback, observation and feedback, excuse me. One-to-one coaching is very critical, and we're going to work, move forward to work with our principals and teachers in that area. But again, in the classroom visits and some of the snapshots, the question still comes, what are the administrators looking for? What are they going to observe? What do they expect from me? What do they expect to see from my students? And so professional learning this summer will be provided. Training for the principals and administrators will provide them with the tools they need to be successful in observing and providing feedback. And then teachers, we'll have a cadre of teachers working on aligning the documents, K-12, we've already completed K through two, but three through 12, and develop common assessments, as well as writing units of study that can be posted on our website. And that's another resource that they have said they wanted. Data-driven instruction, we know that teachers need to dive deeply, or delve deeply, into that data. And Jeff Potts has been instrumental in working with a lot of those teams, he and Cory Jimenez. But even though they really are focusing on that, they still are questioning, what do we, how do we do this? What does it mean? How do we interpret this data so that we can make changes in our classroom? So based on our snapshots, we learned that there is still a great deal of need to offer additional professional learning. And quality questioning, how do you ask the right questions? Working with small groups of students and providing ongoing feedback, those are some issues and some areas that we want to address. Our plans are to provide sessions, seminars, workshops that focus on these needs and continue to collect the data. We have found that that is very, very important, is to continue to collect the data and look at the data as we move forward and make sure that we are doing what we need to do. Our school snapshot, that you saw twenty-two schools participated in, the academics teams did that. Now, in early February, we're taking it to the next level. It will be an electronic walkthrough or snapshot, if you will, and you can format it to print reports, by teacher, by content, et cetera. It can be tailor-made to Richland Two, and we're excited about that. So working with IT and Tom's Department, we're moving forward on that, and hopefully we'll have that by early February. We also believe our data teams need to be reestablished. Many of you may know that in the past, we did, maybe four or five years ago, have some data teams that met with the district and school level with Jeff Potts and the gentleman before him, Shane Phillips, I believe. But we feel like we need to reestablish those. That will give us another venue to really take a look at the data and use the resources that we have in Jeff and in Cory and John Arnold to help us look through that data. We feel that working together in academics, along with the Office of Accountability and Assessment and Instructional Technology, that we can better align our efforts and continue to have our laser focus on the Common Core state standards. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions or comments from the board?
Ms. Sumalet.
Yes.
Ms. Manning.
I applaud the district for how far we've come in a very short period of time with Common Core. And just as much as I feel positive about a lot of the things, I love hearing about our data teams coming back, looking at data and drilling down into that, the form of assessment component is something that I've been looking for for a while. You know, the classroom observations is certainly something that I have brought up a number of times, and I feel like we're really a little bit disappointed it's going to be, I guess, somewhere before we get some of that formally driven. I mean, that's something I'd like to see sooner, though I did note that some of our schools are implementing that now. And so I applaud our principals who are working, our administration that are working with our teachers, because as much as we give training and as much time as we put into that without the right feedback, you're still sort of swimming in a big ocean. It's hard to know if you're going in the right direction or not. Some of the other things that, just as much as I feel great about, some of the other things I'm a little nervous about when I look through the data, the system snapshot data that you gave us. There were some things there that gave me great pause, things like areas of growth that we need consistent development of lesson plans and differentiated instruction, which I know was always a strength of this district. So I'm a little worried that's an area that we need growth in our elementary schools, middle schools. Meaningful and appropriate student work is an area of growth. Some of those are pretty core to education, so we still have a long way to go. Also, a little bit worried that middle and high school teachers brought up that they felt somewhat sabotaged and had a lack of resources, that I saw in one of the comments, even though two-thirds of that group said that they were fairly prepared for Common Core, but then you have some very contradictory statements. So I hope that we're using this information, as you say, laser-focused on some of these areas that I think need a lot of work and attention. But I do applaud the district, we're making great strides. We have a long way to go, but again, some of this, definitely some pause there.
Well, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Manning. We also realize that we have a lot of new principals, leadership roles, that over the last few years, we have several who have fewer than three years' experience, and we have a lot of new teachers. So we have our work cut out for us to make sure that we have the systems in place to ensure that the lesson plans are done. And I'm not advocating for every school to do it exactly the same way. It needs to be tailored to their needs, but there are some standards that we want to see incorporated in that. And same thing with the snapshot, we'll give our principals an opportunity, because they really, and some of them went with our academic teams to do these observations. So they had an opportunity to see what we were looking for. So it's not a gotcha kind of thing. It's really to see, at that moment in time, what is it that we're seeing? And it's still very raw data. We really need to dig deeper into it, so.
And please don't read the statement from me as a gotcha, just, you know, I hope we're using this data to really drive home some kind of basic areas of-
No, and I do appreciate that, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Manning, other comments or questions from the board?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
I too saw some what I perceived to be contradiction, but on the other hand, it may not have been, it may have been that some of them did not interpret the question the same way. And so I noticed that on the snapshot and in some of the comments that were made. So I would like, if we could look at that and make sure everyone had a clear understanding as to what they were responding to. Otherwise, it would be perceived as contradictions in some of the answers.
And Ms. Anderson, we do appreciate your comments as well, and we know that two-thirds of them, as you said, felt comfortable. But these were folks, these were teachers who were selected, who have not been a part of our implementation teams. We wanted to do a check, sort of a dipstick, if you will, to see what other folks are thinking and feeling. And so we will certainly continue to explore that.
And under your potential recommendations or considerations, are we going to get some feedback on what you plan to actually do in response to some of their key questions, concerns?
Yes, we can certainly do that for you. And we plan, this is not the only opportunity I hope we'll have to share with you our update. We'll be doing that later on, I hope, you know, later on this spring. So we'll have some of those.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Other questions or comments from the board?
If I could just make one-
Dr. Ham.
I'd just like to commend Ms. Sumalet for the transparency of this data. When you look at how are we doing and you collect a whole variety of data from a whole variety of people, you are going to get some positive things, some negative things, some contradictory things. And then you have to do this continuous quality improvement and use it the best you can to do the best you can. She's really laid it all out there, and I want to say thank you.
Well, it's thank you, Dr. Ham, but I have to thank my team leaders, and I'd love for them to stand, and anyone in academics and IT who's here, and Jeff and Cory, please stand, anyone. I know you're here. I applaud you, thank you.
Ms. Sumalet, I want to make just one or two questions or comments, I guess, and that is, we use the term in there, feel comfortable, teachers feeling comfortable versus feeling competent. And I'm happy with them being comfortable, I'm more ecstatic if they're competent. So I think we need to kind of look at that as we go further along. Now that they're comfortable, do they also feel that they're competent?
I agree with you.
That's one comment.
Thank you.
The other is, where are we with regards to the simulated, simulated assessment? I guess Jeff needs to answer that for me.
Well, I can certainly say-
Sure.
Jeff, if you want to answer, I'll let you do that.
We do have smarter balanced field tests that will be happening this spring. The state has selected five of our schools within the district. They'll be either taking ELA or math. I think we have one elementary school, one middle school, and three high schools that are participating this spring. And then there's, they have an opportunity to choose one of four windows that are somewhere between mid-March and I think the beginning of May, in that range.
Thank you. I think that's going to be real critical to the question, or the comments Mr. Manning asked regarding, you know, sort of where does the data lead us? And I certainly echo what you said, Dr. Ham, in terms of the commitment to continuing this and being an ongoing process. Thank you very much. I think Ms. Anderson, speaking of this, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I had a little bit of trouble hearing you, Ms. Anderson, earlier, but I thought you may have referenced the feedback on the parent advisory group questions, maybe, maybe not. But I know there's a laundry list of questions, there's some very, very valid and legitimate questions that the panel advisory group had, and I'm sure it's reflective of all of the parents in our district, and so I hope there's some methodology- And so, I hope there's some methodology or approach in place, or will be put in place to communicate that kind of information sort of systematically to all of our parents before they ask.
Okay, I appreciate that. We will reconvene the faculty, teacher, excuse me, the parent focus group. Several people could not be there that evening that we held it, so we will go back with that and make sure we do that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much, Ms. Mallett. Next on our agenda is a report for board budget priorities. Dr. Ham.
Dr. Miley will be making that report.
Thank you, Chairman Jackson and board members, and Dr. Ham. This will be very brief. What I wanted to do tonight was to update you on our budget priorities process. In your package you have tonight, you have a summary of some of the board members' priorities as submitted to us. We summarized those, gathered them like we did in the years in the past. When this was put together, I only had, I think, four of the board members' priorities. So, since that time, I've received those from everyone, but they're not represented in your package tonight. So, we haven't gone through this and summarized them for you to look at and review. So, that's our next step. Secondly, I also wanted to let you know that in the process, we will be, I believe it is going out tomorrow, our survey for all employees to respond to the budget priority request, that's going out tomorrow. The survey will be online, it'll be open until the 24th, I believe. Isn't that correct? Until the 24th of this month. So, we'll receive that by the 24th. And I'm hoping that we still have, and we also asked other department heads, principals for their recommendations, we're waiting to receive that information. And I believe you've discussed possibly having some type of work session of some kind of, and that's what I would like to do. That's what I see as a very important step, to get all of the board priorities on the table at the same time, to help prioritize those. Other than that, we're almost on schedule in terms of our plan that I sent you back in December. We're meeting with the key leaders tomorrow, we're meeting with the faculty advisory council tomorrow, a business partnership breakfast on Thursday to also update them on our process in terms of the budget timeline. Obviously, we haven't received anything from the state in terms of actually state-dollar budgets in terms of at this point, but we can still set our priorities from this point, from our perspective. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I was one of the board members who did not have mine in prior to.
Shame on you.
This, shame on me.
So was I.
So, but just so the public knows, since it's not there, I gave a singular, one single priority, which was foreign language in the elementary schools. So, if you followed me, you know that that's where I would like us to go and make that very.
I couldn't remember who was on time and who wasn't, I just remembered I had four.
No, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure, since the public has this content.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manning.
And in the future, it actually, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And in the future, our board packets can be amended. All you have to do is upload it, and then just let us know that you changed it.
Well, actually, since about 3:00 o'clock yesterday, I was in bed for like 24 hours since I came here tonight for this meeting. So, I didn't see any of the updates until late this afternoon, but, well, we can do that.
Okay, so don't blame us.
Other questions or comments on the board? Thank you very much, Dr. Miley.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, the agenda items for our January 28th meeting, which will be held at Bethel Hanbury Elementary. Dr. Ham.
We actually have a relatively short agenda for that meeting. There'll be special recognitions, the student focus, which will be on students at Bethel Hanbury Elementary. In our series of reports on efforts to improve academic achievement, we'll be reporting on what we're doing to assist new teachers, and we'll be approving the board budget priorities.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ham. Are there any additional items that board members would like to see added to either the next board meeting agenda or future board meeting agendas?
I wanted to know, when were we going to? And maybe I currently am read on the charter school, but I thought they were asking us to approve this information.
No, there's no requirement that you approve it.
There's no requirement.
Just you have to receive it as an annual report.
And so, this is our annual report from last year? Okay.
Although I do want to echo what Ms. Anderson is asking, though, and that is that we have them come and do a formal presentation. I saw the report as well, but I think there are some questions that are already there, and we probably need to have, we probably need to add that to the agenda to have them come and do, as they did before, a formal presentation using that report. So, if we could add that as an agenda item.
Do you want it on the 28th?
Not necessarily.
It doesn't necessarily have to be then, but I would appreciate the opportunity.
Yes.
Because from what I thought I read, it would be most appropriate for the board to do that.
That was in the board brief, would you like a presentation of that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's a request to do a presentation on fourth and fifth grade reading achievement.
Other requests from the board? Hearing none, thank you very much. At this time, the next agenda item is public participation, Part Two. No one has signed up, obviously, since only one person did the first. If there is anyone in the audience, however, who would like to speak to the board, you have an opportunity to do so, you would come to the mic at this time. Thank you very much. Next agenda item is our board and superintendent comments. We'll start on my far right with Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In our board packet, we received a domestic policy review, and what Ms. Johnson, Elkins Johnson was asking, when we attended Representative Mia Butler's violence training, we were asking for one particular person that is, that works at the Blithwood Academy to attend that workshop. And I have the information here, so if you would get that person registered, I certainly would appreciate it. I appreciate all of the information that was compiled for our information, but also, it was a specific request. This guy was already trained, and he needed to get the refreshers training. And I think that we need to have at least one person in our district that's specifically trained on domestic violence and sexual assault training. And it's going to be held at the Sheridan in Raleigh Durham, February 18th through 19th. So, if you would get someone, make sure that someone handles this. And, Ms. Elkins Johnson, do you remember the young man's name that's trained?
Yes.
That needs recertification, is what it is.
Andre Barnes, Blithwood Academy.
How can I give you that, so that we can make sure he gets?
Mr. Barnes?
Is it Andre Barnes?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Now, other comments, Mr. Chairman, I will discuss with you personally at a later date.
I didn't hear you, Ms. Anderson.
My other comments, I will discuss with you later, personally at a later date.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Fleming.
Well, I just want to thank each and every board member here tonight and for their support last year. It was, a lot went on, as we all know, a lot you don't know went on, too. The board knows, but a lot of others don't. And I want to thank you for your support, because I never felt I was out there alone, and that's always a good feeling, Mr. Jackson, isn't it, when you're the chairman? So, it was nice to have that support. I want to congratulate all the certification, National Board certification, recertification and recertification, new and recertification teachers tonight. It's a very difficult thing to do for teachers, especially, most of them are having a full load going on while they're doing it. I want to congratulate them. And the other award winners, we really had an outstanding group tonight of people in our district who deservedly were recognized. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Mr. Manning?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to break my comments up into the four quadrants that the superintendent has presented. So, for the district, from a learning perspective, I appreciate our National Board certified teachers. I think that the work that they do certainly increases the learning for all of our students, other teachers, and the classroom and the community as a whole. Appreciate the Common Core. And, Dr. Ham, I want to particularly make a comment on your comment about transparency. It was very nice to see sort of the dirty laundry and everything, so that we can really get an honest assessment of where we are. And so, I do appreciate that candor and transparency. That is, was very meaningful, and I do appreciate that. The community aspect, got an opportunity to attend the Policies and Pastries, where we have one of our district Teacher of the Year, Ms. Butts brought everybody, brought folks together who were policymakers, and I see several folks who are here with us, Teachers of the Year and others. That was a great community event for us to sort of sit down and look at where we're going as a, as a community as a whole. Under character, I want to mention our student athletes, who really are academically very strong. That was so great to see such strong, the character that they have as far as academics before athletics, and actually, they're great at both. And then, joy, I want to thank our outgoing officers, Dr. Fleming, Ms. Brill, and Ms. Anderson, for a great last year. And thank you also, board members, for your support for vice chair this year. I look forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning.
I just want to say, I think Mr. Manning's the first one voted in abstention to be an officer. He was late for the meeting, guys.
I don't know if that worked in my favor or not, we'll see before it's over.
Ms. Specter.
I don't know what to say after going after James. Ashley James actually summed it up really great, and it's just good to see everybody back from the holidays and ready to go again. And I also want to say thank you to our fellow board members that served for the past year, did an awesome job, and thank you for voting me for secretary.
Ms. Specter, Ms. Brill.
I'd like to echo the other comments. Congratulations to our new officers. Look forward to working with you and supporting you any way possible. We have a lot of work to do, and it's just exciting. I think we're all ready to move forward, and I, you know, I noticed a great deal of excitement and interest. I think the holiday break was good for everybody. Want to congratulate our nationally board certified teachers and the ones that have been recertified. We're first in South Carolina, and I heard them say we're 14th in the nation. So, we're doing a lot of things right. Extremely proud of that. And I was impressed to finally see the students that we've been reading about, and that's really exciting, you know? The fact that they're doing well in the classroom and then well in athletics, it validates what we're trying to do. We're just building solid people, I hope. And I appreciate your report, Sue. I understand it's a huge undertaking. It reminds me of that expression, when you're eating an elephant, one bite at a time. And I think you all are doing a great job, and it's impressive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Ms. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, I just have a few comments. One, I just want to echo what some of my fellow board members stated about the pastries and policies. Teacher form that we had on last week was very informative. It was great talking and meeting with the teachers and hearing their concerns. And just a few that I want to mention, is the teachers want to implement foreign language back in the elementary schools. They would love to see parent educators in more of our schools. They want formal training on project-based learning, as well as they want to know, is it possible if a veteran teacher transferred, that they do not have to go through the adept process? So, those were four of the main concerns that they brought to my attention. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to our National Board certified teachers. And also, I see Perry Mills is out there, I'd like for you to stand, if you don't mind, please. Would like to say congratulations to Dr. Perry Mills, who just completed his doctorate degree, so congratulations. And one other is Kendra James here. I know I saw her earlier. Well, she's now Dr. Kendra James, so congratulations to Dr. Kendra James as well. And just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Look forward to a great school year, remainder of the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Elkins Johnson. Dr. Ham?
I have several comments that I want to make. First of all, I want to congratulate our new leadership, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Manning, Ms. Specter. Congratulations to each of you. I look forward to work with you in your leadership positions. And again, thanks again to Dr. Fleming. Congratulations to all of our nationally board certified teachers. Just before coming over here, I learned that our International Baccalaureate Middle School Years programs, that's at E.L. Wright and Original Northeast, received their authorization with no recommendations, which is just fabulous. I was just sorry to hear that. Dent Middle School was the winner of this year's QuizWiz competition, so congratulations to Dent Middle School. I'll remind everybody that a number of our schools will be, in fact, all of our schools, I'm sure I'll be honoring the work of Dr. Martin Luther King this next week, in whether it's reading books, or listening to the "I Have a Dream" speech, or learning about civil rights movement. Our teachers are finding creative and meaningful ways to convey Dr. King's message. I, too, want to mention the Policies and Pastries events. Wow, that was a great first for our teachers to be advocates for teaching and learning and our students. They did a great job, it was a great turnout. I was so proud of them. I want to thank the board members who were there, there were senators, there were members of county council, there were legislators, it was really, really great, and they did a super, super job. So, congratulations to our teachers for doing that, and thank you, board members who participated. They did that sort of as a round robin, like speed dating, it was really, really a good event. There's some pictures here you can take a look at, but it was wonderful. So, things are good in Richland, too.
Thank you, Dr. Ham. I won't repeat anything that's been said, except need to say, I'd like to echo what's been said. However, I will say again, another thanks to Dr. Fleming and the team that worked with him in the executive role as offices of the board this past year. And I think it's very evident that the teachers in Richland, too, continue to excel and do great things. There's a theme that, at the place where I worship, each year we have a theme, and this year's theme is moving forward. And so, that's sort of been a mantra that I am carrying as I accept, humbly accept the role as chair of this board, and that is to move us forward, thank the team that worked in the past, and look forward to moving us even further and moving us forward as a united board in the future. If any more further comments, Chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Adjournance, in a second.
Motion, second. We stand adjourned. Thank you very much, have a good night, folks.